I can.
Sorry about that. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Samantha Elliott's muted.
I don't want to listen to feedback in the room, so you should be able to hear me through the main speaker. Anyway, so. Yeah.
Sure, we do want to get to slides though, so public participation will be later.
You brought up all the attorneys and court saying that it could be a split decision.
I'm just making my own prediction.
So if it's a split decision.
Based on over forty years of experience, it doesn't mean I'm right. God knows, I've been wrong plenty of times.
If there's a split decision, why are you saying that then it automatically goes to the state?
Well, what I'm saying is I don't, I believe that state will probably have the right to do what it's done. But I don't believe that the state can say to, will be able to say to the city or town of Milton, I forget, I think their town, can say to Milton, you know, not only are we going to take your grant, but you also now have to comply.
Now, can it, if, if it's split, or if it goes to the state?
I know, I can't, it's.
Can it proceed up to the higher courts? One on appeals and then to the Supreme Court?
Well, my understanding is that on October seventh, the hearing is before the Supreme Judicial Court, which is ESJC, which is our highest court.
In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts. Whether there's a federal question here, I have no idea whether there's something that's appealable beyond Massachusetts. I haven't researched, I don't know. I'd be.
The only thing that would be put before the Supreme Court is the Supreme Court to decide whether or not they're going to accept.
Yeah, they, they have to have four votes out of nine to grant cert, but it has to be an issue that is one that merits their consideration. Usually it's.
It is going against Massachusetts.
I don't know if this is a, I don't know if this is a Massachusetts constitution, whether, whether it involves the federal constitution or not. You can always make an argument.
Is your wife, I'm sorry, is your wife working?
My own personal computer is trying to get back on.
Yeah, no, mine's out, so I, I can't. I can't log into Zoom. So I don't know, is it another room?
I think, can you hear us in TV land?
Yes, we can hear you in TV land and yeah. You, you picked a great rainstorm to.
Yeah, I know. Between that and Town Day, why don't we ask, have more questions because we can't get on to the.
I cannot, I can also, I mean, I can go over it without. I, I know, but if it's not going to come back up, there's only, I don't want to waste your time.
I think it's the network. This is working here.
You guys, if you want to answer my question.
More questions, yeah, keep more questions.
Let's, let's finish up with you. I don't know about you at Supreme Court, sorry. I hope I'm not doing logo jump. I was trying to.
Well, is everything in between that?
Given the importance of the question, the highest court in Massachusetts is handling it.
Right, and it also can be appealed.
Well, that's the question. To whom do you appeal?
I, I can't imagine the.
And it's going to be very difficult without it being a federal question. You have to have standing to sue, to go before the US Supreme Court. So Milton or the state, whoever doesn't prevail and wants to appeal, has to have standing to go to the Supreme Court. There's very particular rules about that. And one of them is you have to show that it is a federal question. I mean, another example is if two states are suing each other, that's different, but here it's all within Massachusetts. So it's very, all conjecture as to whether, and highly speculative as to whether there would be any possibility of appealing to these US Supreme Court and getting them to take the case.
Well, I have zero years as an attorney and I think it will get shot.
Yes, question is asked.
Dennis Clarity of One Office Road. Does Milton have MWRA? Are they tied into, is Milton tied into the sewer system? Or, or is Milton all septic?
I, I don't know.
I would imagine Milton is mainly sewer, though, would be my guess.
No, I imagine that Milton has legitimate reason for appealing because they not tied into the MWRA. And they would, they have, everything is on septic systems in Milton. And they would have to build a sewer system to accommodate the, the new housing. That's my, I, my understanding why Milton is asking for a waiver.
I haven't heard that, but maybe.
He's got the.
Yep, I know that.
Are you ready? Do you have any more questions you want to talk about?
I just think you need to mute your.
I, I have it completely muted and I don't know, it's just, I know it's, it's got feedback, I don't know what's going on. All right, so this is a presentation, kind of just going over the potential districts and their maps. This is based off of collaborating with everybody, with the public reaching out for surveys, public forums. I've gotten emails, I've met with people, I've talked to people at Town Day. We've had a lot of public meetings to try to get information in the form of feedback through surveys and trying to understand what it is that as many people are amenable to or what they're concerned with. So we really looked for gaining guidance on a new map, some new districts, which locations you wanted to be considering for this second iteration, the offsite and whether or not it's desired, and then support for character areas, which we got feedback on all of that. And so now we are looking, oh, sorry about that. Now we are trying to see how we can make that work in Wakefield with what our minimum requirements are from MBTA communities, which is thirty-six acres, one thousand six hundred and ninety-six units, a minimum of fifteen units per acre, and seventy-five percent of our district, which is twenty-seven acres, needs to be within one of the station areas. So it needs to be within point five miles of one of the three stations that we are close to, Wakefield, Greenwood, and then Melrose Islands. And so the proposed areas that we are looking at, walk away from that for a second, are North Ave, Albion, Greenwood, Audubon, and Foundry. Gives us a grand total of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, which is about one point five percent over what the minimums are. Gives us a little bit of wiggle room should things change with setbacks open area or any, any criteria that we have to meet as part of the bylaw. So right now we're looking at doing two stories on North Ave, ten stories on Audubon, which currently it's twelve. So it's actually shorter than, should it be rebuilt, it would be shorter than what exists currently. Greenwood would be two stories, Albion would be two stories, Foundry would be five stories total. Now, North Ave, Greenwood, and Albion are all areas where mixed use is potential, so they could be up to threes. Well, North Ave is required, so North Ave would be residential, three-story story because there's one story of commercial or a non-residential use on the first floor. Greenwood and Albion have the option for that, so it could be up to three stories. This chart, and I will post this, do you have a question? I did, it's completely off, I've turned it off. Yeah, I did. I know it sounds really weird, I am aware it's giving feedback. I went through and even turned every single individual component down and it just won't turn off. So, sorry about that. That's part of why I'm stepping away from it so I can hear it. The PowerPoint that we posted online, so everybody can review it later. But right now we're looking at these, the, you see the proposed numbers in our 3A is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, the existing units is eight hundred and seventy-six. So the difference between what exists there currently and what is proposed is just under nine hundred units. But that would require every single thing in those areas to be demolished and everything to be completely built out, which is very unlikely. And this is how the conversation kind of goes of getting credit for some certain components. Because it is overlapping existing developments that have been approved more recently and kind of capturing those areas that are unlikely unless there is a catastrophic event, such as a tornado, fire, hurricane, all of those kind of things. They likely will not change in their size or density and they would have to be rebuilt under their existing approvals. If they tried to go back and get approval under MBTA communities, they would be subject to different regulations, set of regulations. So it's a whole separate, I mean, it gets to really get into the weeds, it's a whole separate process. So any questions on this before I pop over to the next? Great, so. Okay, great. So one of the proposed areas, the first one is the mandatory mixed-use area, which means if somebody is building something here under MBTA communities, it will have to be mixed-use, not just residential. So that is all up and down North Ave from Lake Quanapawit down to the middle school. And it also covers the small station area, just pushing a laser, just across right where the train stops, right across North Ave. That's the only part that includes both the east and the west side. So currently you have a bunch of units per acre in this area because most of it is commercial. There aren't a lot of existing mixed-use, mixed-use is traditional development for a neighborhood, commercial scale development like this. And so you will, under MBTA communities, it would be a potential increase, but it would be keeping a very similar footprint and design pattern. So that's just the area looking at density, and these are all numbers from residency. Again, I've mentioned it a number of times, go on there and play with that, look at the existing uses. This is the Audubon site, which is colonial, and it is currently utilized as a high-rise residential building. It has a hundred and seventy-six units. And the, the call-out up at the top says you could have a maximum of four hundred and eighteen. Would be heavily impacted by wetlands and whatever parking they can construct on-site. But that is the absolute maximum, meeting the restrictions of MBTA community. It's, I've been talking to the consultant, we want to double-check that number because we don't want to be pushing something forward and then end up without compliance or anything to double-check that all the wetlands are properly in, in the MBTA system because we know that it's, it's so heavily impacted in this area. It's been brought up a number of times. I have talked to Conservation Commission about it at this particular site. Brianna had some conversations with the, that group of, it will be going, will have to go for comment to them prior. But they are, were talking to me about the different areas that would be impacted and it can't have any uses on it, any of the wetlands. So that, this particular site would really be concentrated development just as it does now. And that's what it looks like. Again, it's a hundred and seventy-six units currently, and that's thirteen point seven nine units per acre, but mostly because a lot of that extends into the wetlands, as you can see in this area. Okay, Greenwood is another area that they're looking at. So it's on both the east and west sides of Main Street and then along a portion of Greenwood and Oak Street. This particular map doesn't have the fire station pulled out. I talked to the consultant and they just had gotten me back a map. We have updated, these numbers are accurate, they just, the map is not updated. So this one is, though, it pulls out the fire station, so that's not included as part of this. But this particular area primarily has commercial uses right now. There are, the color that you see are the handful of residential uses, they're all multifamily or at a higher density than if one single family. And this currently has eighty-eight, eighty-nine units, residential units in it, and with the potential of doing the two stories of residential or the mixed-use, which is again a total of three stories with a commercial first floor, it could have up to three hundred and twenty-three units. Again, still needs to meet parking requirements, still needs to meet setbacks and all of the other standard criteria that are part of the zoning code. Albion Street has both the north and south side of Albion Street included. This would also be an option for mixed-use, it's not required. And it could be a two-story, just residential structure, or it could be a three-story, non-residential first-floor use and then residential above. Currently has seventy units, and this one's kind of funny, under MBTA communities, because of the size of the lot, it's actually only fifty units that we get credit for here. And the, the funny thing is, is it's not even fully developed for residential. So there's a place where I know on the last public forum and from survey comments, that it's an area that could be used for revitalization, same thing with Greenwood. And so that's why they had asked to, the subcommittee had asked this area to be included based off of those public comments. Then Foundry Street. This district kind of little zigzag, has a little bit of a zigzag edge. We are trying to capture the existing developments, areas that almost, almost all of the lots on here are already developed as multifamily. There are currently four hundred and fifty-eight units. There's another sixty-five that are being built currently, so that number is slightly off. So roughly goes up just over five hundred. So there's about a two hundred and sixty different, two hundred and sixty-ish unit difference between the existing and what's proposed under MBTA communities. And again, there will be, there are height limitations of five stories, so it won't be as tall as Grayson Lots. There are setback requirements, there's open space, there's parking, there's all kinds of criteria that would be required for it to be, have anything that's built. So they're not just going to completely max out an entire lot with no parking and overbuild a space. And it will still have to go through a site plan review, through CBA, so there's still parameters, just as a, as kind of a background. And this captures, again, most of the existing areas that have been developed or are being redeveloped into multifamily residential. Sorry, the existing, again, the brown is kind of the darker color here, shows the highest density of the areas that are in the district, it doesn't show the surrounding areas. So I talked a little bit about, at the beginning, and we've talked about it at the last forum, about character areas, what that means. It tries to maintain the existing development standards around setbacks, height, use, although not specifically regulating use, but use as in, is it a residential, commercial, something like that. And so that's something that we looked at. So effectively, we have different sub-districts, different variations of height, setbacks, uses and whatnot that would be reflected under MBTA communities, so that each of these different areas has its own set of parameters. So that it's really focusing on what is appropriate for that area, not just what can we build at the maximum numbers or how much can be shoved in a little area. So it's broken up into four different character areas. There's the industrial lot character area, which is on Foundry. Trying to, again, maintain that kind of existing development pattern that's already started there. There's a high-rise residential character area, which is on Audubon. There's neighborhood commercial character area, which is Albion and Greenwood. And then there's the North Ave mixed-use character area, which is on North Ave, surprise. And that one is the mandatory mixed-use. So there is no option for someone to just build a residential structure. We are trying to maintain that commercial base and keep that first floor engaged with the pedestrian and in theory with the commuter, may or may not be taking the round, maybe utilizing some of those businesses that are down there. So kind of some examples, I know not everybody loves Grayson Lots, but it is an example of what's over in that area. The, the way that the bylaw is outlined currently, and again, this, nothing is, is being put forward, it's just the first draft iteration. This would not be able to be built under MBTA communities. It is six stories. MBTA communities for the industrial lot character area overlay, whatever, however you phrase that, is only five stories. So they could only go up to five stories. And there's also a height limitation that comes with that. So if they're trying to do five stories but pull every, you know, every story up to twelve feet, that's not going to fly. It needs to be twelve, or it needs to be five, more realistic five stories, I think, is what I wrote. We've got a hundred and twenty feet. Oh, no, sorry, wrong one, just kidding, fifty-seven feet, so under sixty feet. So it would be, like I said, smaller than this. This is another example of an existing development. This particular one is five stories and in that same industrial block character area. The high-rise residential character area is colonial, kind of an example of what is there, what would be maintained. And this, again, is twelve stories tall, so if something were to be rebuilt, it would only be ten stories, it would be actually smaller than this. The North Avenue mixed-use and neighborhood commercial character areas would have the potential for mixed-use buildings. And this is just an example of one that's being built. And the first floor is a non-residential use. The second and third floors are set up for residential use. This is what one could look like. Not saying it's exactly what would be built, just kind of an example to give a visual of what mixed-use looks like. Another option of something that could be built in Greenwood or on Albion Street because we cannot mandate mixed-use there. I can get into the details why if anybody wants later, but I'm just going to keep with the presentation for now. So this is an example of actually seven units on a fifty-foot wide lot. So you have a, in the front, I don't have a laser pointer, it's six units, these are smaller housing. So this is absolute maximum probably of what somebody could build. And again, there's still going to have to be parking and all of that stuff. Just trying to get some different visuals. So this is a, these are one-bedroom studios. And then they have studio duplexes in the back here. And so those are for, this is actually from an article on microhousing, but it gives an example of something that could be built. And just kind of some visuals, it looks more like a traditional apartment building that you would see probably from early nineteen hundreds, around nineteen hundred to nineteen thirties, maybe. So just kind of giving some different visuals. Does anybody have any question?
Just want to, you're on a wrong road, a site. Is there, is there property for additional building to be built? No, there are, are you, you're taking, you're using the risk factor, saying someone had to tear the building down to rebuild it?
Yeah, so that particular lot has about this much space in the very middle of it. It's obviously not a circle, but it's a very tiny spot in the very middle of it, where the building effectively is built right now. It's slightly to the northwest of where the building is built. And that's the only spot that you can actually build in, under MBTA communities. So MBTA communities has more stringent regulations than they have because then, you know, anybody else's or any other municipality's standard zoning code, because there are different components of how far you can go into a buffer or what your required buffers or what your potential use could be in some of those buffer areas. So in looking at all of those different moving pieces, really what can be built is, is very similar to what exists. They're currently just on a smaller scale and in that same relative footprint.
So if the people want to do that, you're trying to minimize the risk.
And it would be smaller than what's there currently, so it's unlikely that they could do something like that.
Jim Sullivan from Harwick Road, the character areas, are those requirements in the MBTA 3A when you called them out the way you did?
They're not requirements, no, but they allow us to meet the different development standards, the existing development conditions of the different areas. So if, rather than applying the conditions to Foundry everywhere, we're trying to keep the scale enpassing and the overall uses and feel of an area consistent. Like last time, the, the zoning code was just one blanket application of multifamily, period, on the entire district. So this time what we look at is trying to reflect the different development standards that are in an area. So it allowed us to keep that character while also meeting the intent of hitting that minimum amount that MBTA has, that 48 has imposed on us. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
To slide four, proposed areas, I think it was the fourth one. So if you would, Sam, just briefly explain, because I know the state can come back and knock some of our stuff off. Folks may expect to see sixteen ninety-six there, but we do have to put in a buffer, so that's why we have the extra twenty-four, right?
Right, and I'm going back through everything with the consultant right now, just to double-check, like, are there, is there anything that could possibly be missed? Is there anything that we need to be aware of? And the biggest one is Audubon with the wetlands area and the open space. And then once you add in the requirements of buffers and parking and all of that, it can impact some of those numbers as well. And so now that we have that, we are going back through and verifying that these numbers are still what the state would be considering. It seems like the only one that we have to double-check or triple-check, I guess, is Audubon at this point.
And why would you anticipate that the state would allow us to add these sixty-five units into that equation?
Not until they have the certificates of occupancy.
No, but I think for this, for this purposes, this is just kind of showing what we, is already there. Sorry, I'm permitting it up to the state. I don't really care about that. On SHI for a, for a, a photo unit, yes.
Mr. Sullivan's question, you're, basically, we're not dictating the character area. It's just by way of explaining that we have five-story area, we have a ten-story area. You know, we're trying to maintain the character of North Ave, Albion as much as we can. So we're, you know, we've got our two, possibly two stories. I mean, Greenwood, even though it includes a fair amount of acreage, you know, I think it's pretty conservative from our standpoint, the current map, because it's not really building up all that much.
That's a great point. One thing I did leave out in talking about the character areas is that you've got, Foundry would have five stories, Greenwood would have two, or at most three if it's mixed-use. And that, the only way that we can break it out to have those different height limitations or different setbacks is through character areas or sub-districts, whatever you want to call it. They're the same type of thing, but the, the state does allow us to be able to do it that way. So rather than having to impose just one height on everything and one set of setbacks on everything and one set of block coverage and, you know, whatever else components I can, I can beat them all, I don't know what all of the different ones are. But it allows us to really reflect what the existing development is and be able to meet those standards a little bit better. Be sensitive to existing development as part of that.
Any other questions online?
I don't have any online, but we're certainly open for them. Raise your hand, please.
Frank Mangarida, Summer Street. One question on the Foundry Street, and this goes to the question of, not yet permitted, but we expect that there may be a large development at Broadway. Is there any reason why they didn't extend that to, over to that spot? I mean, there's those small businesses and there's proposed, I don't forget the number, a hundred and twenty, I forget the number. But is there a reason why we didn't do that to try to get credit?
I think it's a very easy answer. It's wetlands and hydrology. So there are different overlays that the, different boundaries that the state has for wetlands, watershed, they call it hydrology, that are, that come up Foundry away from Crystal, Crystal Lake right there. And they come up pretty much all the way to the southern boundary of this district, or the southern boundary on, on Foundry. They come up right about here. And so, and then it goes all down here. And so, and comes all the way back over here into, into this area. So, and goes under the, the middle school. So with.
Let me, specifically Mike's gym, that's the area.
That's, 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 that would not be allowed.
Everything.
Okay, but, but you're going to allow something else there. They're going to build something there.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
So here we are, going to get, you know, another huge development. And then we're not going to get credit, and then we still have to do this. It's just a shame that we can't get credit because now it's a wetlands.
I agree with you.
And that could be a fight, that could be a fight, but I just wanted to ask.
The state has different regulations for all that stuff, and unfortunately, if we, well, let's say we would, we, if we did want to include. If we did want to include it, they still won't give us a number for it because of they, they'll just say zero potential to be built.
I understand.
So, you know, our hands are tied with some of those, because we really did look at trying to capture some of the other areas and getting as close to that. Wetlands line, um, or hydrology lines, watershed, um, but it just wasn't, it wasn't possible to go any farther south and get credit for it, so you could add acreage, but you just don't get a number for it.
Yes, I, I, I think we have to think about that one in our back pocket, because that. That, that's just another, you know, way to get railroaded here, we're just getting tired over. And for, for the good work that we're willing to put up with, and that traffic is horrendous. So I, I just say, if, if we're gonna do it, and, and I appreciate that there has to be courses of action, you have to have an action. To meet the state aside from fighting it, I'm not, because I think any logical business or entity has to do that. But this could be an area that of reconsideration, that's all.
And one thing we like to keep in mind too is anything that's in, anything that is within the MBTA communities. Boundaries can be done by right. So there's no special permit, there isn't an additional review, they have, they do have a whole laundry list of criteria, there's height, there's penetration requirements, there's all kinds of stuff. That they will be required to do, but that's only gonna be reviewed through a site plan review process. And confirmation that they're effectively, it's just gonna be confirmation that they're following, it's letter of the, the bylaw. Um, whereas with special permit, there's a lot more that can go into it, that's a lot more nuanced, especially in dealing with an area that is potentially in a watershed area. Or with a lot that's in, in a watershed area, so it, it's, it's part of too why um MBTA communities is kind of. Um, holding a hard line at some of that stuff right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you too, it certainly seemed kind of bizarre that you can build here, but it's not part of. You know, MBTA communities, um, I guess if there's a rationale, and I'm not saying there is, but if there's a rationale. I guess it would be, since you can do it as a matter of right, we're gonna be overly protective of wetlands. You know, it's, not saying it makes sense, but I guess that that would probably be the rationale of.
Hey, we have Ted, Ted Noel on one.
Sure, thank you, um, Theo Noel, Eight Fernwood Road. Uh, so I, I wanted to um just pick up Samantha's point. The uh, one advantage of excluding Mike's gym from this is that it still goes through um special permit. Um, which would be an even greater uh review standard, right? So, so that's, so um, like, one, one. One advantage is more, more local control through the special permit process, um, so that's. I, I think uh. Ad- advantageous, um, uh. Um, I really um. Uh, appreciate the discussion about the character areas, um, because I, I think that is also helping, I think. Um, to really emphasize not, not going higher than uh. Than what is, you know, expected or, or accepted currently, so I think that's, that's a real positive. And I'm. So I'm uh really appreciative of the sort of the maps and the attention, so thank you.
Yeah, we heard a comment about forty, it's not a forty B over in Lincoln, it's, it's under the special permit uh district where, you know, we can get eighteen percent. Uh, before the units, so we slowly creep towards the ten percent through the special permit district, uh, forty B will get you there quicker. Um, because sometimes you can get a hundred percent in the units.
Okay, so it's not, it cannot be forty, that, that's, that's fine, it still hurts that you don't get the credit.
Oh, it does.
In, in here.
We, we've been feeling this paper, we just have a, have a cycle now. You'll be online at the. I know that we didn't get sound at the very beginning of the meeting for the online participants, and I know that Counselor Vincent had made some comments, and I. Never want to extend the meeting unnecessarily, but I wonder if it might be a good idea for him to give us up these comments that a lot of people probably didn't get.
How about they could hear it?
Oh.
No, they couldn't, they couldn't hear it in the be, in the beginning, your comments. If you make them again, people at home.
I had people texting me asking.
Okay.
Cause I had nothing, okay.
You can say that.
What I had said at the beginning of the meeting was folks have been asking, why are we going forward with a proposal at all? Our spring town meeting vote on the three plans, um, they all shot down. And what I noted is that I and Chair McLean, we actually voted against all three plans at town meetings. And that wasn't because we, that's because we didn't like the plans. It was not because we don't think that we should comply with law, though we may not think it's a well-reasoned law, we still think that we should comply with it. The next thing I noted is that we feel by law fifty-six dash one. Uh, authorizes the town council having the authority to prosecute, defend, and compromise all litigation to which the town is a party. The next thing I noted is, we, the subcommittee, we are three members of, of the seven-person town council. But I noted that when we are evaluating our responsibility under fifty-six dash one. We can and should use our professional experience in our evaluation. And I noted that between Counselor Dombrowski, Chair McLean, and myself, we have one hundred and one years' experience, not just as licensed attorneys. But as litigators, now I will put a caveat that I have been retired for ten years, so. I'm in retired status, but I will also note that I have four years of experience as a, as an appellate judge as well. So the three of us do agree that we should put forth a plan and send forward to the spring town meeting, to the fall town meeting, and we should comply with the law. And then I also noted that Mr. Mayo, when you look at his experience as an attorney, he's the town administrator, and he believes that we should comply with the law. That gives us in the aggregate a hundred and thirty-four years of experience as attorneys. The last thing that I mentioned was part of our duty in preparing for the, a compliance by law for the fall town meeting. Is that we feel it's incredibly important to let the town decide this issue of town meeting, the legislative body should decide this. Not the seven town council members who could effectively make this decision by deciding not to go forward with anything at all. So we think it's imperative to let the legislative body, i.e. town meeting, make this decision. And then we also consider the fact that Milton is currently paying two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in legal fees to defend itself from the state lawsuit. Plus they agreed with their law firm to pay nine hundred and forty dollars an hour. By the way, I never got paid anywhere near that money when I was a Navy JAG officer, um, plus they get paid nine hundred and forty dollars an hour for additional legal fees. And Milton is not just sitting back waiting to see the resolution of their lawsuit with the state. Um, their planning board is actually um actively working on additional plans. In order to try to comply with this, if you know what happened in Milton, they actually passed it at a town meeting, meeting, and then there was a referendum. And then they decided not to comply with the law, but, but the Milton officials are still going forward to try and put something together for compliance. So those were the comments that I made at the beginning. Although I didn't have the joke about, you know, what you get.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, did you, you had a comment, did you want to repeat your comments, Steve?
I, my comment was that we really um. Tried to listen uh to the community, a lot of questions, getting them tonight during the presentation, why are we getting credit? For um what we've already done as a community, we've done a lot, two thousand fifteen, we passed a bylaw, we needed a two-thirds vote at town meeting. And a lot was built through this bylaw, and um. Unfortunately, all that we've built, um, and there's been a lot of units, um, we're not getting credit for. So when we, when we talked about this and we met in our meetings, um, we kind of overlaid or put this new MBTA. Um, uh, district over those items that, those areas that have already been built. Um, most of which go by special permit, most of which were through the two thousand fifteen change. And uh, exception of Audubon Road, which um Sam has already talked about, so we're trying to put it over areas that are already built, so the net effect would be less, is what I was pointing at. And to answer Mr. um, my good friend Dennis's question, I just looked up MWRE communities and it looks like Milton's in it, as I suspect, thank you, okay, thank you. And I have nobody else online.
No, no other questions?
No.
Yes.
I, I would say just uh more a uh, a statement, I, I'm intrigued by what, what you've proposed tonight. I think the state law is awful, that has not changed my mind whatsoever. Um, but I appreciate the effort and I am intrigued and will try to uh study this a little bit more compared to what we looked at uh in the spring, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, yeah, the uh. You know, in the, in the prior cycle, the grants that we would, that we've received in the past were discussed. You know, the summer, the neighborhood, three point six million over three to five years. There is a certain nervousness that, that place might expand, although it's supposed to be, you know, housing related. We hear things, uh, you know, that concern us a bit, you know, but I'm overly concerned about it to the extent that, I mean, if the town meeting seeks. To go the, the root of uh compliance, you know, that's, that's the choice we made. But there's some dollars out there and they're gonna be contrary arguments, it's something to, what we're about to cause of the future growth. So uh, these are all things we all have to consider, we understand that.
And one thing to add that came out of a, a regional meeting, regional planning meeting, I was out for other municipalities, um, through M A P C, is that. There has been confirmation that some other grants are adding in MBTA communities' compliance as not a requirement. But something that gives you points, because they, when they take a grant application and they rank it, so you get points for each component of your application. Mass Works is one that has just added that um to their criteria, so if you are not compliant, it doesn't prohibit or. Exclude you from applying to that grant, but it will drop your ranking down, so let's say your, your priority was three before, because you're not complying, you're now down at thirteen. And they may get through the funding that they have before they can get down to you. Um, and that's just the, the reality of something that we're looking at, um, but there was a confirmation that the state has confirmed that's, that's one of them. Um, Mass Works that will be adding that criteria, so while not explicitly housing-related, um, and not excluding people. It is unfortunately kind of coming into play in various, various ways.
We're, we're trying to be totally transparent on those grants that we have received and the ones that may or may not apply. You know, one of our counselors had mentioned at a meeting that we might lose money through Castle White. One point five million was the number that was put out there. I went to their meeting, you know, I contacted them, and I asked them that, we asked town council and town council, talked to their council, who was not our council with an S, as opposed to. Council with a C, and um, it was pretty much the opinion that. That's an overstate. Like, the kind of grants that Castle White gets are not necessarily going to be in play here, so we're, we're trying to do a level playing here, for argument's sake, we're trying to. Make it fair and say, we will lose some grant money if we don't comply, here's what we have received in the past. Uh, they do make us a little nervous when you hear public figures operating us, talking about maybe expanding that, you know, to, to other areas, it could happen. Um, but we're not operating on fear factor here, we're just operating on facts, that's the facts.
Yes. You know how much money the state will withhold from us? Uh, the town review? Is there a total on that?
Well, we looked backwards, and in the last cycle, it was three point six million that we had received. Over three years, but I asked the subsequent question, I asked, how about over five years, and it was still three point six million. So if you want to average that, you know, whatever that is, seven, eight hundred thousand a year, in, in, that we had received that we would not receive. Assuming we were seeking the same amount of grants for the same amount of projects in the, in the future, so. You know, we, we can't necessarily, we can identify the categories that they say you won't get, just as an example, we've invaded a housing choice community. Um, within the last year or.
Last year.
So, and from that, we have obtained some grants that they would go away. If, if we did not comply, and, and there are others, there are other categories. So we can quantify it, but we can't give you a future prediction, and with, you know, we, we can try, but it, it's, it's gonna be somewhat speculative based on. Um, what we might seek in the future, I mean, we're always seeking grant. Those are our tax dollars too, if we can get some of it back, we want to try to get back.
Does that include the school, the high school?
No.
High school's not related to this.
No, M S B is separate, right?
Yeah, we, we did confirm that.
Yeah, that is a question to be answered, Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is where we got the money for the high school. That is not part of something you could lose, we looked into that extensively recently. If I just add something.
Sure.
Things about the grants, I did pull the strings on, on one potential grant that we could lose that I think is very important. So when Milton, when Milton didn't comply last year, they immediately lost a grant in January for a seawall infrastructure project. So the grants can go away right away. So last spring, we got a grant through the Housing Choice, um, through our Housing Choice Community, as, as Chair McLean mentioned. We got a grant for seventy-nine thousand dollars to get a consultant to put together a new housing production plan. And why is it important that we have a housing production, everyone in this room knows what's going on in the Han Street. And you know that we, the Z B A, voluntarily tried to invoke the safe harbor provision, but that's a two-fifth cent threshold, you don't have a certified housing production plan. So it's imperative that we get a first-approved and secondly-certified housing production. So we got the grant in around April, May, we immediately sent it out for bid. We, the bid was released in May, it was closed in June, it was awarded to a consultant team, and J M Goldstein.
Yeah, what a good job, making a list.
And the town council established a housing production plan advisory community, which I, I sit on as one of the town council writers that lives. Um, we started this process with a goal, tried to try to get a housing production plan before the town council by next spring. Once you submit it to the town council, they then would direct Mr. Mayo to send it to the state. The state normally takes about, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these facts, the norm, the state normally takes about three months. Um, in order to approve the housing production. Then you take a look at your sub-site housing inventory list. And at some point in time, and I think it's about a year between approval, you can go to the state and ask them to certify your housing production plan. Is that right about the year? So we could get it to the state next spring. Sometime in the July of twenty, sometime in the summer of twenty-five, get that approved, and then sometime in the summer of twenty-six. Get it certified, and, and looking at our sub-site housing inventory numbers of the last few years, we, we'd be way over the threshold that you need for certification, because it's one percent or one-half of one percent. If you reach one-half of one percent, your Z B A can quick, can say no to forty Bs as not consistent with local needs for one year, if you hit the one percent threshold, they could do that for two years. If we don't comply, this is my personal opinion, if we don't comply with the MBTA law. And we're not compliant as of New Year's Eve this year, we could lose that grant in January. In which case, we'll have to wait to the spring town meeting to go and allocate money to get a consultant. We would then have to start that process over, and when you look at the timeline that I just described, we started this spring. In order to get something ready by next, by the spring of twenty-five. And then get it approved by summer of twenty-five, and then get it certified by summer of twenty-six, this would set us back an entire year. So that's it, that's a, that's a grant, that's an example, in my opinion, of a grant on a project that's imperative for us to get passed. Because we don't have a certified housing production plan, it is extremely difficult, as all of us in the community have seen. In order to stop some of these forty Bs, so that's just an example of something I put together myself. Of, um, so I, and I may be wrong on this, of the ramifications, we don't comply on a particular grant that we possibly could, could lose. And what effect, net adverse effect that would have on the community. Thank you, Chair.
Your.
Oh, well, somebody, I just wanted to respond to that with all due.
I do have someone online.
Yeah, with all due respect. We have such a huge forty B problem, you hung that problem on a seventy-nine K grant that we did not have this money? That, that is unacceptable in my mind as to how we're doing business. No, I, I appreciate that. You're talking about the scope of forty Bs, I live near those Nahand Street ones, I, I've seen enough, but. To me, that is unacceptable to use that as an example of a huge problem.
Well, that was the one, that was one I can find.
If you wanted to say plant flowers at the lake for eighty thousand, I'd be like, fine, I get it, okay, we can do without it, but.
Well, we had a housing production plan that expired in twenty twenty, so. And, and it wasn't renewed for an additional five years, so that's why we have to start over from scratch, the point I'm making is that it's imperative that we have.
I agree, I, I agree completely.
And, and the reason, yeah, I understand it's only seventy-nine thousand, but my point is, if we could possibly lose the consultant in January. Unfortunately, we have to wait till the spring to go to town meeting to allocate the money to get a new. unfortunately, we have to wait till the spring to go to town meeting to allocate the money to get a new one. So I'm just talking about that it delays things for a period of time.
There's no other money.
Didn't renew it or why wasn't it renewed?
It's not, it's not about the money.
You, you have, hold on, I want to answer your question. You have to apply for renewal. But we can get into specifics about the housing.
It's separate.
There's somebody who's had their hand very patiently waiting up online, so.
Ronald Ferrara and, and Miss Beagle.
Uh, thank you. My name is Ronald Ferrara. I'm at twenty four Morrison Road West. I have a question. I brought up a couple of times the last few meetings that we had about a traffic, traffic study for the entire town. Is there any, has that been undertaken at all in the last few months?
Uh, for the entire town? No.
Yes. Is there ever going to be, considering the amount of traffic we have in the town? We have a bunch of projects that had their own individual traffic studies and I don't know if they've ever been combined as one total study to give an idea of what we have for traffic in the town.
They do work off each other. We have looked at corridors, but we are actually looking at a, a new software package that will actually be able to do the whole town. If you, if you, uh, there's going to be a presentation at the Traffic Advisory Committee about this potential package on the fourth of October, eight thirty in the morning. So look at that and, and I think part of your question would be answered.
Great, thank you.
I want, I want to get back to the point though about the housing production plan. Forget the seventy nine thousand. Just want to emphasize how important it is. Because if it had not lapsed in twenty twenty, I am of the opinion that with, we've been talking a lot about, gee, we're not getting credit for it. We would have gotten credit for a lot of the special permit district eighteen percent development if we hadn't had that in place. Since we don't, I think, two of us anyway, one of our major priorities has been, we got to get that thing back the best. So I think that's the point the counselor is trying to make. If we're not focusing on eighty grand. You know, if, if we, if we lose it, I'd go to town meeting again and try to get the money or I'd, or I'd talk to the town.
You'd say to find the money, that's what they say.
I'd say find the money.
If you said that to the, the, the town citizens, the seventy nine K, we could stop a lot of forty Bs, trust me, it would pass. It would pass.
Right.
And I agree, but the more important thing is, why was it let to lapse? And thank you for doing that.
Well, if I answer to that, it's going to be that, you're not going to like this answer, but Councilor McLean and I were not on the town council when it expired in February twentieth, twenty twenty.
I know that.
So I can't.
So I'm not asking a question I don't know the answer to, but I'm just saying, why was it let to lapse? And now we're in this situation and thank you for doing that.
They, they turned, they only good for five years for the state.
Yes.
What you have to do is about ninety days before it expires, you write to the state and you ask them to renew the housing production plan for an additional five years. Now, the state can decide that they don't want to renew it. Personally speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the state would have renewed it because one of the top priorities in there was having an order of a housing trust plan. Which was not implemented until the town, town, town meeting of last year. So I think that there would have been a lot of arguments for Wakefield to make to the state that we do need to renew it for an additional five years because there were major components in it that haven't been, come to fruition yet. But once again, I don't know if the state definitively would have, but I do know that Wakefield did not request it.
Well, it's, it's a lapse in oversight that is now in the situation. And, and to the, to the, to the point where the state could have could not redo it if they wanted to. It's the same thing with these grants. The state could decide whether they want to give out grants. Under their current administration, the state is not in the great financial situation that, you know, they should be. And that these grants aren't necessarily going to be available potentially. So the fact that they're dangling those carrots is, is, is kind of ludicrous at this point. I know that she had a question. I have a whole list of stuff, but all of her.
I don't have the same one behind me because I can't say that.
It had to end up too.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to what Mr. McLean said. You said it averages like seven hundred thousand dollars a year for the grants?
It was over the previous five years.
Okay, to me, town money and the taxes we pay, that's pocket change.
It's a valid argument.
That's pocket change for what it will cost us for additional teachers, additional police, additional fire, maintenance on the roads. The, what it's going to cost the town if this is pushed on us is far more than what we would get in the grants.
My response to that is, you can always have an argument to each side. I've accepted your argument. I think my counterargument to that would be if I was to make one. And I don't really feel I have a big horse in this race, okay? But my counterargument would be, with all the building we did under that special permit district. And I wasn't on the town council when it was, you know, when, when it came into, I'm not sure if I was even in a town meeting that way, that, that during that cycle, sorry, I admit it. But with all of that growth, we should already have a new elementary school. Should already need a new elementary school. And it may just be that the density of these buildings, you know, and I remember arguing against you were the spirit building. I remember arguing in a town meeting, you know, but what about the schools? Our kids don't live in those buildings. Those buildings, the children may live in apartment buildings. You know, they may. But we don't have a bubble class in the elementary school. No. That doesn't mean we won't have growth in the future. I understand the counterargument, but think about that. We've had thousands of units. We haven't had that particular problem yet. What I'd say is, the bigger, your, your, more of our growth comes out of forty B and comes out of the special permit district, then I believe is likely to come out of this. Plan as proposed, compromise plan as proposed. You can accept that. That's my opinion.
I mean, take, take this mistake in the state statewide, is that when they pushed the forty B out, we didn't fight back on that.
Forty Bs been in the books for decades. I'm, I'm with you.
I know. It should have got to a point where we said enough is enough and fought to get it on the ballot, so the state could have voted it down.
It's, it's not going anywhere.
Something to clarify, in the M B T A community district versus the special permit district is that the special permit district has a higher density than what's permitted under M B T A communities. Just so you know. So you have, when, and that means when they have a higher density. So like, if M B T A community is, is at thirty units per acre, the special permit, and I don't know what the actual number is off the top of my head, so forgive me, but it, it is higher than thirty. And you can get more by going through different processes. So it, it's something to keep in mind that actually overlaying this has the potential to kind of keep some of that down too, like a lot more of that.
So the, um, go ahead.
So, um, I just wanted to point out that there are other communities that are saying they are not going to just fade in the overlay.
I get emails.
Yeah, I know you do. So you know that, and you know Marblehead has decided not to have a fall town meeting. And Wyndham now has done the same. And they are saying, one of the things that they are saying is that the cost of infrastructure will not be borne by the developers. So it will follow the champ and they're concerned about that. And those are very valid concerns. So my question is, Steve, you had alluded to the fact that our next tax bill will include the high school.
Yes, for, um, most of that will show up in the next fiscal year.
Okay, so is there a way, and just on an average, I certainly, you know, I think I had wrong information when I spoke to you and you said, I don't think it's that high. But is there a way for us to know, just say on an average assessment of seven hundred thousand dollars, what that, um, increase is, for the school is going to be by?
Yes, I can, I can, I can pull up the, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Oh, certainly, no, and I'm just thinking as a point of reference.
I can pull up, but we made a presentation at town meeting, but what that would be, you might remember a lot of columns and things.
I do.
Um, and I made that presentation, or we did, with rates between four and a quarter and five and a half because I wanted to, I wanted to be, I was on the side of cautious.
Yes.
And the first, uh, laws came in at, um, at three point six percent. So that's good, right? Interest will be lower on that. But I can share you that information and you could show, you can look at your price point in there.
Well, I think, you know, as a resident, it would be good information to know when trying to make an educated decision about this, this place.
Right. The, 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 a positive thing is if, you know, when more property is built and the taxpayer, the tax base increases, okay? The average, no, don't shake your head because this is true. The average for that, but
So this would cost us for the infrastructure.
But that, well, I can, I can talk about that in a second. The, that bill, which is the bill for the high school, is the bill, right? That will be spread over more people. So that particular bill, you know, will be covered by more units. So, you know, the units that are being built on Foundry Street now, the big D V I Z signs that you see, they're going for over a million dollars and then, so they're going to get hit with part of that galvin, with galvin, galvin end, the high school.
Well, and of course, there are condos. Can you explain to me, is there a difference between a building that's all rentals that has two hundred rental units versus?
Right. Yeah, on, on what the, what the valuation is. So that valuation of a building that is rentals would be the integral.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, and maybe the taxes are, are, you know, most landlords will pass on your portion of the, portion of the taxes to you. Condos are individually taxed.
Right.
So if you have a condo valued at, um, five hundred thousand, that's, I think of what they're going with, the Foundry Street is showing up there, those units there. The five, six hundred thousand dollar range. So you get your separate tax bills if it were a single family home.
So a rental, you, a rental building.
Rental, the building owner will pay one big tax bill. Now, the building owner may parcel that out, probably will, to each unit. Each unit rent will come up.
And it's not. So if I understand it, I could be wrong, a rental, um, assessment is not going to carry the same tax burden as people paying.
No, it'll have more. I mean, that rental building might be twenty million dollars. So the tax will be based on twenty million dollars. That, that, um, extra would be based on twenty million dollars.
Okay.
Well, I think to your question, let me, let me, let me jump in on this because, you know, I, I think what you're really driving at is there may be a difference in valuation, for example, per unit, for a rental unit as opposed to condo unit.
That's right.
Condo units are going to be pretty clearly based on sales. We can track those pretty much, you know, but I'll tell you, I've looked at a couple of evaluations of rental buildings. They put fourteen out about, I think it's fifteen million. So I mean, they're not necessarily being under taxed per se. They may be valued based on, you can talk to Victor.
Victor does a pretty good job where he's.
Okay, well, it's, it's all information to build into, understanding the big picture. And, um, I personally would be more on board with this if that we're going to be condo units because I like to see people on homes. And I, I worry, you know, voices from the beginning, that we're pricing out a lot of young people and I don't think that's fair. And in fact, I think it's really sad. So I'm trying to educate myself more on what's happening as far as the, how many of these will be rentals? The developers will come in happy as clam because they're not responsible for the infrastructure. People are locked into rentals they can't afford to get out of and we're all suffering from more taxes and awful traffic. I don't see the win-win in this.
I've never accepted the premise that we can build out of the problem relative to cost. Whether these are, some of these, say we do, they do a mixed use, I don't know about, whether it's a condo or whether it's rental, I don't think, you know. My personal opinion is, you know, having looked through a number of cycles, that, um, we're building, no, the tax of a number of units is necessarily going to reduce prices. I remember a year, a year or two ago, I was at a seven hour online where gentleman, Pittsburgh was saying, if you build more down around here, you know, then the costs are going to go down and it'll be less costly to build in Pittsburgh. So if those build buildings, I just don't accept the premise.
Well, one thing too, there's a fair amount of research out there that does show that when you build more multifamily, the price of the, the valuation of the single family goes up because remember land's a finite resource. And so if there's less land available for a single family structure to be built on, that it actually makes the single family, existing single family more valuable. Because there's just less and less and less to be built. Additionally, I mean, I got, we got into the weeds on it on a, um, a call I had with Chapa actually earlier this week about M B T A communities. There's just so many different little factors that go into the cost of housing, the cost of development. Developers aren't making as much as you think they're making, um, because of the cost of acquisition, the cost of labor here is, is being an incredibly high cost of living area. There's so many different factors. But there, and I don't want to use everybody's time up tonight, not getting into all of that. I'm happy to chat more offline about it, but, um, it is something to, to keep in mind that, uh, your valuation, again, there's, there's still a component that your valuation is going to go up year over year unless we have a a massive recession and everybody's property values drop massively.
Better than that, your taxes going up. It's only good if your value was up if you want to sell. Other than that, your taxes are going up.
Or if you want to take out HELOC or HELO.
Well, I appreciate your input there, but I'd be fine with my value of my home not increasing if more young people could be able to afford a home. So I am not on the side of not having people be able to afford homes. I, I just don't see it, the big picture, that it's a good, good outcome.
There, there's also the, the whole component of the economy of scale. What's been built over the last ten, twenty years in most places around the country is that they're building the larger homes that are going to get a better return. Because if you build a starter home, you're not going to get, because of the amount of land, you still need, um, a number of the similar finishes. Now granted, a luxury home or higher ranked home or larger homes, going to require more of those, the cost is higher. But the payoff is substantially higher with a larger, that two point five million dollar home that's being built in Lexington on a double lot that could probably fit like five single family starter homes, the payoff is larger. So right now, when people are looking at the, you know, it comes down to the economy of scale, that's another component that people are unfortunately looking at, which contributes to the affordability issue that there is in Massachusetts. But again, I'll, um, I'll stop.
I'm very quiet. Um, so I have a lot of things to talk about on Drive. You're quick. I mean, a lot of them are just statements, so I'm just going to kind of go through some things.
Very well.
I, I did, so when you're looking at me when you say people are sending emails, that is, I mean, that's. I did say, so I did send the town bill, asked the state auditor, because they see this as an untened mandate, which I tend to agree with. They have a lot of other reasons, one being that they have to build wells and stuff like that, that's going to cost them money. Has the town Wakefield done a financial feasibility study of what this is actually going to cost us with electric sewer, fire, schools, all this? If this is fully built out, because we look at the census, which says two point four people per household in Wakefield, that's quick consensus. That point four, I assume is probably child and school. Now, I know that you say that we can't do this based on schools and all that stuff. But that is a real cost to the taxpayers in town. When these areas are already in schools that are either over a hundred years old, as we read, or in other schools that are already in capacity. So there's a lot of things, I know in the survey that you did, thank you for the information, because I caused that. Impacting schools, forty one percent of respondents. Infrastructure was thirty two percent of respondents. Town demand on police and fire was twenty seven percent of respondents. Parking was sixty one percent of respondents. That was one of the top concerns of that. I'm also want to point out on the survey, which I don't have the I P addresses, which let me know if anybody was in this area that actually took the survey, but out of the eight hundred and fifty four respondents, there was two hundred and sixty nine that said no and three hundred and fifty five said yes. It's a difference of eighty six votes. So it wasn't like this, this really over resounding yes that people want to do this in town. Because that was really a ten percent difference in between the two. Other things I wanted to point out, that in the comments section, there was, there was eighty five people that thought it, so they could type another. It was very revealing that probably, you know, being generous, probably ninety five percent of the respondents are not positive on this, this whole thing. So just, you know, that's what I was trying to dig in and answer copies of all eight. Well, I'd like to see this board actually send a letter to the state auditor as well to see if this is an untended mandate and what their thought is on that for us. Because, you know, if we're looking to represent the entire town, there, there's nothing that would be detrimental for this board to send this letter to the state. That would be something else in the toolbox for us. I know that Milton is spending a lot of money to fight this and I know that Marcy's, I don't sound your counterparts on the boards have said, they don't see it the same way you do. They just like, no, they canceled their special town meeting in, in Marblehead. And Wyndham and Hilton said, we're not bringing it forward. So there is a whole other side to this, I, I think that you'll find. The other night on the Plankford meeting, you had, you had alluded to, you had concerns whether this would all get pulled together at the time of the town meeting.
Well, I, I said, I don't know. I said that the timeline, everybody has to be able to review it, still has to go through the process. And that was before I finished the bylaw. It was not done. The draft was not done.
So, um, to the point of the bylaw, I brought this up to the last time. That although it is a town meeting, it doesn't fall under the rule of law. It is a zoning art. And zoning requires maps. And with maps, it also requires that you have addresses, cheats and boundaries, plot numbers, street. uh, addresses, cheats and boundaries, plot numbers, street addresses. Are those gonna be included in this? Are you gonna list every single street address, and you're gonna put in writing in the article? So that people don't have to refer to the map, because I also brought this up, that a map is not ADA compliant with Title II. You cannot, a person who is visually impaired or blind cannot read a map, and their digital screen reader on their computer won't read the map and tell them exactly where all the boundaries are and all this stuff, that wasn't put into the article, I suspect that's not put into this article, I had asked that for the last time, it's, it's gone, unresponded to. Um, I think every single person that this is affected, because every one of these colors that's on this map, that's somebody's problem, that's somebody here in Wakefield. Whether they live in Wakefield or not, it's a whole different story, because some of these, a lot of these, because of the way you've resold it, it's all commercial business. Which I get and I understand, and and I appreciate the work that you've done and the openness of this as opposed to the planning board, the way that they handle it. I have issues with them, as you know. Um, but a lot of that is real estate, and these might be people that don't live in Wakefield. Those are people who might not be aware that their businesses are potentially being affected by this, because we know because who live here, they might not live in this town. Will they be notified by post five, by mail, or whatever it is? Will they be allowed to come and speak at town meeting, even if they're not a voter, because this is their property that we're deciding and making changes on? And to that point, will they be allowed to vote at town meeting, because this affects directly their property? These are all bigger questions.
I I can answer the last question, the answer's no.
Right, which I know.
Yeah.
I know these.
Will they be allowed to speak, will they be allowed to speak, that'll be up to the body, the body has to vote to let people speak. Um, will they be notified? Our plan is to flyer, to deliver and deliver to everybody, every property.
Okay.
Actually, Council Carney vote that.
Just only leave mailboxes, because that's against law.
No, we'll go, we'll do it, uh, we'll, we'll do those out. Um, I will talk to town council about your, uh, town council mullin regarding the, uh, your other, other points that you made up.
So I'll, I'll leave this.
If you leave that, I would mean that.
Thank you. Um.
That was the other.
So there was, we was mentioning, um, like you mentioned, uh, somebody offered us an attorney to, uh, to help to review the bylaws just for the bygones. And I would ask that if there are any attorneys that aren't directly employed by the town at whatever point it is, if they have a, if they are not being paid, that for the VA, this is certain results. Because I think that somebody looking at that and saying that often helps, right, like, you know, I, I would make sure that they actually get paid for that, because that's my. There was, um, sorry.
I'm in about the flyers. Is there a reason you can't mail it to the taxpayer, because you have their information, like why do a flyer instead of mail?
Well, I think that I know it gets there, and people don't check their mail as much, and we find that flyering is actually the most effective way that we found over the years. Yes.
I'm just thinking of the postcard that he's mentioned before that we got, because our neighbor put in a curb cut, and I think this is more part of the, than a curb cut.
Yeah. That's statutory, and why?
Yeah, yeah.
This is actually.
So, so I would like to see an economic feasibility study be done, because what it's gonna cost, because there, there is a lot of time.
Yeah, I, I, I can tell you that we, we had one. We didn't do it, all right, and and we're not gonna be able to do one, so, there right now. We did do one, just just at the time and and one was done however, one, I, one was done however, for uh, two hundred quarter power. Yeah, I pulled that in here, I have to do your coffee today. Um, and the ZBA reviewed that on two hundred quarter power. Um, and on the middle borough, which you, I did read, that you're sending that to me. Middle Borough, I don't believe gave any credit for the taxes, real estate taxes, or any other taxes that they were gonna collect on these units. So that might have been better part of their argument, you know, I'd have to see that. So, on two hundred quarter power, which had four hundred and eighty-five units uh in it, um, the taxes generated from that, that the economic firm looked at was uh almost one point eight million dollars a year. This was back when they did that, one point three million in real estate and uh, and uh, four hundred, five hundred thousand in excise taxes. Um, from that, it's what they claim, it's not my numbers, but I'm saying it's what they did. Um, the cost of additional police calls, fire calls, police calls was a hundred and fifty-one thousand a year, fire was two twenty-eight, um, mainly being medical, okay? That doesn't mean it costing us more, two hundred twenty-eight, that just means that our staff is going out more. DPW and others, thirty-seven thousand. Cost of the schools was eight hundred thousand a year, they felt, um, with the, the town receiving ninety-two thousand more in chapter seventy cuts. Because most students actually gives us more money from the state under the current, so you have to pull that up. Um, they thought, and they thought that this would add sixty-six students to the school, okay? At the end of the day, it was actually a net gain, of course, I remember I'm saying the developer, I might have said this myself, right, net, net gain to the town, okay? That's what they said for this, so, you know, economic, and that does not include what it adds to the local economy. So I'm just saying that that's.
For how many units?
Four hundred and eighty-five, which is about, you know, a quarter, half, half of the additional units.
Is it posted?
Is it building those all at once?
Analyzing.
That's building those all at once, yeah. Um, I can give you a copy of this, and it was presented um to the Board of Appeals, but I don't know.
Maybe it were posted as part of these minutes on this meeting, some people.
I'm, I'm having to do it, but it is just an example, I don't wanna say that it is anything that.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, information's power, right?
So, if one of the town meetings, we had, one of the things they brought up is that Wakefield got a grant to do about one mile, they asked how far that was, one mile of water being restored, so.
Yeah.
It's two million dollars.
Yeah.
So when you start building out these areas that are going to have to increase the capacity in these sites, this water, this sewer, that's electric, because and I, and I did check on the, um, the specialized, often specialized, I misread what it was saying about, I was thinking that it didn't apply, but it would apply. So these would all have to be all over. They have lots of these, they can't be cast.
That, that's, they're all carrying.
Right, they all have to be like.
They have to be iron, which, what does that do to the infrastructure? Now, I know up at the head of lake, they had all that infrastructure put in, whatever the business was there, so most of the lines, they probably needed this whole bit of felt were already there, so that.
Yeah. And that, and that company paid for those lines, too.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yes, if they have a lake, they pay, they pay a million dollars.
Data center.
There's some data center. That are.
Well, isn't, isn't grazing loss all over?
Grazing, I believe grazing loss is all.
I mean, we are, we are managing to.
They stop, anything that can be got, so.
We're managing to do that, as, you know, everybody is concerned about the grid ultimately, but they seem to be doing okay. So I just wanna make sure, so you know, we, it's federal money, we just got one point three million for water, straight to replace, or finally replace, there was less of our gas, you know, you know, gasoline and DPW are working on that. Um, so great money is, it's a good thing when you need it, you know, and, but, but necessarily adding, I don't know whether adding, you know, some units of two or three stories worth of that is going to cause more work of light, we already have added the Tono Valley, which is much bigger, you know, and I don't know that that costs us anymore.
It may be a capacity, because I know the schools are capacity, because the superintendent said they were. So anything we're adding to these, we're really gonna go.
A bubble class is when you see a company that you are going to have to add a new class and then they'll teach you. I'm just saying, I was, I was in town day in the rain, Wakefield Fire Department, and the school committee, every story, we don't have a bubble class, right? In any of the old entry schools.
Well, then, sure, I, at town meetings, said they were in capacity, so I'm just, I'm just saying, I heard it from you, so.
And if you're not arguing. Just saying. Yeah. I've often said, growth begins growth, it's not necessarily gonna give you a tax cut, I've said that, I mean it.
I mean, so gee, the other argument is someone could buy my house, right, and five kids could move in, that'll be, it's almost a tenth of what all two hundred and twenty pounds is.
A lot of people want to still.
Well, I mean, if they were.
I know, I'm bad with it.
But if you're in the zone, you can also tear it down.
Yeah, exactly, they could, yeah, yeah.
I never should be told about that.
Sure, I went point of forty view, but, no, just kidding.
I would have a cell phone.
I, I also have a really interesting article on the construction cost of middle housing, granted, it's from California, um, but it kinda just helps uh, the missing middle housing, which is what the, the three, four unit buildings, um, are referred to as. Um, unfortunately, my, the wifi is down again, so sorry, the presentation is gone, um, but I'm happy to email that to you if you.
I mean, any, any single family homes within these districts are gonna get scooped up by developers, because they'll tear them down, they'll build four stories.
That's specifically why, I, I, I begin, not putting the zones where all the single families are, you know, but.
The other thing is, we, we, we discuss, and thank you again for the information on. Somebody's trying to. We started.
It's Tommy Ballack, it's a new version of the Zoom ball, this isn't a Zoom ball.
And, and one quick thing for verification too, is that, um, it, the, anything built is gonna have to meet uh, all of the different criteria for sewer and um, other infrastructure components. Um, I can't obviously speak to all the other departments that review it, but it is part of the, um, and it is part of the, the forty-three A section.
We're doing a whole bit once, but the developer will be on the pay all the pressure. The reality is not, it's gonna be done in bits and pieces here, here, over the course of a year, so it's gonna be done in town, the towns.
If it's, if it's done, we don't know how much, but actually we can track this.
The other thing, and I do wanna mention this again, and we had talked, and thank you for pointing me this. Mandatory mixed use, and it's not, it's not labeled mandatory, it's something you, something that's fine, but Albion Street is just, it can be mixed use. It's not mandatory mixed use.
Correct.
But in the, in this, it also says that it must be multifamily by right, if it's in mixed use. So just so you know, that any of this commercial real estate, they, those people convert, can convert legally by right to convert to presidential. Bring, point that again, that, you know, you say you're getting taxes, but you're losing taxes as well, so.
It really depends, it really depends on the value, what is gonna start to the size of it. I, I understand the difference between the rates, that's why I was speaking to town people in favor of the commercial project, by the way. Because, you know, I was on board of assessors for three, three and a half years, I, I get it, um, it's mass assessing, so you can sell in value, my house goes down, I'll pay less taxes, not so. You know, it's mass assessing your, you know, we have, we, we have prior tax base, plus two, you have plus two growth. You know, when you understand the way mass assessing works, um, you know, the real evil would be if my house was valued lower and yours was valued higher, for some reason, that's the real problem with assessing.
Are you, are, so you're confident are gonna have this all pulled together in time for town?
We are.
Well, mass upgrades, you had, it seemed like you had serious.
They were asking what the dates were for everything, and I was saying, I don't have all of that information, I don't even know what's going to, yeah, I don't know what's going to be, I don't know what the timeline is right now. Um, because I'm, I'm waiting for some other components, but yes, I have it right here, here's the draft.
Because your, your counterparts on the planning board didn't speak favorably. They actually said it would be a terrible mission of duty if you did not pull this together in time for town meeting.
Well, we're in, we're in a short timeframe, we are, you know, it's a busy summer.
I, I actually, I actually would prefer if they did it, because they screwed up so bad the first two times, that I would be extremely confident going in November, that it would get shot down again. I'm more concerned with the way that you've done this, that it's gonna be a challenge to get that changed, because I think you have been much more open, and you've been much more considerate of what the people in town want to see, I still think it's bad for the town.
Well, it's a short timeframe, you know, the planning board has its own thing to do, and they, they, they'll either agree or disagree with this, I suppose, they'll have.
Well, I have concerns whether they can be.
All they do is give a recommendation.
Right.
So, you know, it could be.
I just, uh, so, yeah, I, I think we have to forget to go to town meeting, but the town meeting, sorry. Uh, I think you guys have done a commendable job, um, and Chairman, the committee put in, it was excellent, because in talking and discussing this issue with, prior to this, I know that you, you three were more knowledgeable than I were in these areas, and what you've done is, I don't know, I think you've removed a lot of the risk, but you can't remove what we all know was due to what, what, say, what you're such a hit to, we'll pay that price. Uh, we can't win that battle, but it's gonna be up to town me when they decide this, but I, I just wanna think, I think you did a commendable job, and, and I think what you put together is excellent.
But we will try to make it all the time, right, and we're gonna, that's when, when you folks leave us tonight, we're gonna have a little, you know, discussion. Okay, let's, let's schedule it, schedule, schedule.
Okay, um, the seventeen hundred and twenty-two units, uh, may not get built at all. I mean, it, it may be a nothing burger, but, but the town, the state will definitely uh, rescind the money if we don't pass this. And if you go from, uh.
I, I don't think we can say they'll definitely rescind the money. We may not get additional grants, but I don't think you can say they definitely will, so.
Yeah, but, uh, if you go from, uh, Hamilton, which is gonna make themselves a martyr. Uh, they have two acre house lots, uh, minimum, minimum size. And so, nothing gets built in Hamilton, uh, it's very little. And then, right next to Beverly, which is wide open, and, and it got shopping centers and everything right on the border with, uh, Hamilton. And if you go up one A, you, you, you see, when you go up one A, you, you see Beverly, and then you go into Hamilton, and it's like a bucolic, uh, nothingness, you know, it, it, they have wonderful houses, wonderful fields. And it's, uh, it's, uh, and they, they obviously have the money to fight this.
Yeah, they're going to fight.
They're, uh, going against it, and, uh, they're defying the state, which I don't think is a good idea. Because there's no guarantee that seventeen hundred and twenty-two units will be built. And, uh, and it's, and in Los Angeles, that's the same law. Which, uh, allowed, uh, one to four, uh, four families on each approved lot. And no house, no houses get torn down. Uh, they just built on the one to four families, uh, four families on the, uh, approved lots. And it's unlikely that, uh, developers will buy up all these properties and build four families, it's, it's just not fashionable. Thank you for your time.
They just.
Mark, 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 you can. Mark, he was up. Mark, I can't hear you.
You can tell where the.
It says he's unmuted.
Uh, yeah, Frank Margarita, Summer Street, uh, this is, uh, around the proposed area of Audubon Road. So it, again, in, in the name of trying to be constructive, and, and I, I applaud that the groups looked at a lot of options to try to mitigate this. Uh, is there, there was recently zoned areas, I'll call it the pot shop or whatever, that was, there's other areas and other buildings down there. Did we look at any of those, with, uh, any of those in a position, or, you know, in a state that, that it could be, that zone could be extended, where we could add? Because I, 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 I know the high rises right on that land.
I, I, I can answer that, only twenty-five percent of the area can be outside of the radius around the train station.
Okay, so that's, that's why we couldn't add anymore there, and we did, did again overlay it on top of a residential site, because we didn't wanna lose commercial taxes.
Plus a lot of them were knocked down, I think, because of the wetlands, because of that extra wetland protection.
Yeah. Yeah. We did look at other sites, that's right, but they were.
I had, I had asked them on other, you know, locations.
Okay.
You mean, off, off of Audubon?
Yeah.
The one off Audubon, yeah.
No, everything else pretty much on Audubon. It's within what lands our hydrology watershed.
Okay.
There's another small, I don't remember what the building is, but it's just northwest of Colonial Point, there's a small portion of the lot, of the existing building that is eligible as well, but the rest of it is all excluded.
Okay, right, I forgot about the twenty-five percent, so everything else had to be close to the rail.
Right.
Yeah, and again, if you, if you put it on top of.
There is a rail there, just not used.
Again, if you put it on top of a commercial, there's the added risk that you're gonna lose the commercial base if something does happen.
True, and that's a higher tax base, no.
This one was really all about wetlands, it's pretty. But this one is really all about wetlands. It's pretty, it's pretty wet up there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mark took his hand down, so.
Alright, well.
Can I just say one thing?
Of course.
Jane McConnell, fifty nine Cedar Street. I too wanna say thank you for all the work you put into this and and the time, the the listening. I I have a sense from all of the work that we really took to heart, what people were saying. I think it's really difficult because. So much of this is all based on potential. And and there's no way of knowing which way it's gonna fall. And the potential for them to build half of these. Or a third of these, we have, we we can't. Therefore, then you can't decide how much of an impact. And yes, there's going to be an impact. I mean, there's no matter what on the sewer and on the whatever, but how much? You can't. Put a value on that and so it makes it hard, at least the way I see, to do an educated, concrete, educated. You know, salutes, answers to all of this and. You know, you're working in these what ifs and that's always a lousy place to be, no matter what way you go. But again, I think you took it and you did a lot to make it more tangible and better understood. Doesn't mean we may get more people to agree or disagree. You know, but um I think with what you had to work with, you did a phenomenal job and I greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. We have no other hands ready?
I have one more handed.
We have another hand.
Adrian Amovitch. I've run Adrian Hanovich, thirty two Crystal Street. Also wanted to add my thanks to. Uh to this body. It's my first time participating in one of these meetings and I found it incredibly thoughtful and insightful. And as a as a, you know, now three year Wakefield resident and a parent of young kids, I'm just. And and in the Greenwood area, I'm just so excited to see opportunities to make our neighborhoods more walkable, more accessible, more exciting. Um and so I I see a lot of positive potential in this, um but also acknowledge uh some of the some of the potential downsides. So. Uh thanks for all your efforts and I'm excited to learn more.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum, did you have another?
I was just pointing out that.
Oh, okay. Right. Any other hands I'd like?
That's it.
Okay, seen none. I'm going to uh close this meeting at seven forty six PM in public forum. Thank you all for attending. Thank you all in line for attending. And we will work on the timetable.